The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, Member One, and welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, July 17, 2023. The first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held June 26, 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
Second.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. No additions from administration tonight.
Members of council, seeing none, we'll move forward. There's no public hearings and notices, delegations, proclamations, and petitions, there is none tonight, reports of standing committees, there is none tonight. We have the consent agenda of the fire department report from June 2023, casualty report in May, the water treatment plan report of June 2023, and public works report June 2023. These will all be found on the city of Weyburn website once passed. Motion, please.
Your Worship, I'd make the motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, accounts payable?
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,820,374.43 from June 1 to June 30, 2023 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Director Wilkinson, the RFP for the landfill filling cell design.
Thank you. The city of Weyburn landfill was established in the early 1990s and is currently owned and operate by the city of Weyburn as a regional dump and cover facility. Historically, the city of Weyburn has utilized both the trench method and the strip method of landfill development with a clay-lined base. In 2018, a phasing plan was developed for the landfill with six phases, but a detailed and engineering filling plan has not been developed for each phase yet. During the last permit renewal application, the Ministry of Environment requested that the city start filling out of an approved engineered cell on the historical and existing waste disposal areas by March of 2024. An RFP was issued for the detailed planning and design for the filling and capping of the Phase 1 waste disposable area satisfactory to the ministry. Associated engineering work included a desktop review of all previous studies, groundwater monitoring programs, design and filling and operational plans, filling sequences and phasing modeling and design peer review, surveying engineered waste disposal cell design within the existing footprint, the existing landfill slope, grading drainage and erosion control plan, stormwater management plan, design of leachate collection system, conveyance, and holding pond, optimizing initial placement and development to optimize long-term functionality and cost as the landfill development progresses, develop an intermediate capping and closing of the existing waste disposable working face currently filling in a non-engineered cell, examination of the feasibility for a landfill gas management system, examination of the surface and groundwater management plan, including a remediation plan for groundwater impacts, decommissioning and reclamation plan that is satisfactory to the ministry. The 2023 budget has allocated $200,000 for the detailed design of the Phase 1 filling cell at the landfill. On June 9, the engineered design of landfill filling cells request for proposal was posted on the city's new online bidding portals and tenders, SaaS tenders in the city website. Proposals were received by the city of Weyburn as of July 5 at 4:00 PM, and a total of five proposals were received, and you can see the five below. All proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements and could meet the project objectives and deliverables. Proposals were evaluated based on qualifications at 15%, their work plan at 15%, knowledge of the regulatory requirements of 20%, relevant experience was 25%, and the fees were 25%. All proposals met the response requirements with varying degrees of details demonstrating the firm's relevant experience, knowledge of regulatory requirements and qualifications. The details provided in an engineering proposal are typically used to gauge the accuracy of the proposed fees and level of confidence in the work plan requirements, reducing the risk of scope changes. Although Eco-Engineering Limited proposed the highest fees, they also submitted the highest level of detail in their proposed work plan, regulatory requirements, and project understanding, representing their team's extensive landfill experience. Included in their proposal were detailed examples of how their proposed regulatory, conceptual, and pre-design work can help the city reduce long-term monitoring costs by closing data gaps and consolidating redundancy in current monitoring and operational practices. The majority of the proponents' proposals demonstrated that they were qualified to complete the work. Scope, Eco-Engineering's proposed work plan combined with an array of relevant Saskatchewan landfill project experience, including existing vertical expansions in Saskatchewan, will provide the city with the greatest value for the proposed fees. So it is recommended that the engineering design of the landfill filling cells be awarded to Eco-Engineering Limited for the proposed bid price of $163,500.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'd motion that the proposal for an engineered design of landfill filling cells from Eco-Engineering in the proposed bid price of $163,500 be accepted.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion. Questions? I'll start it off. Oh, go ahead, Mel. You go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Jen, I'm just wondering, like, we have such a variance in price. Is there any way in future to have more detail in the scope so that the different companies, like, they quote on the same things rather than have such a variable?
So, we give the engineering firms, I would say that when we write these RFPs, they are a bit broader in the sense that they will understand the details better. And so, in the case, some engineering firms will say, okay, this is our base price, but then you can add this in for a cost, or this in for a cost, for this and a cost. With an Eco-Engineering, everything was kind of encompassed in that, where they detailed it out in the cost better. So, it is a choice of how an engineering firm presents, and so we do a lot of, on other RFPs and these ones, they do call us after, and we go through, and we explain to them, like, okay, this is why, and this is how it's evaluated. These are really tough because you have to understand that these are the experts in the field that are bidding on them, so they have to provide a presentation that they feel is going to meet their requirements. It is tough on these ones because there is a lot of detail on them, so.
So it's really how much effort they want to put into it and what they think?
In some cases, yeah.
They want to give you what they feel you need for the best price?
And we do lay it out, like, we do lay it out and what is required. And I mean, this one was a little more detailed, where we did put the fee as a bit lower than we have in the past. A lot of times, the fee is 50% of the weight. In this case, it wasn't because we knew we needed the accuracy and the experience and the work plan needed to have a little more weight than necessarily the fees this time.
Thanks for that explanation. Thank you.
I guess this idea that we have worked in the past, in the last seven years of being here, associated engineering, we have no issues with, and they have the expertise also along the way. We are in a time of constraint, that's $50,000 cheap. Are we getting $50,000 more, or would associated engineering end up adding cost plus onto us here? Or is that, because, again, and then you look at, you know, you look at KJS Group, I don't know who they are, and they're, that's $60,000 plus, yet we're nickel and diming on other things, and we're willing to spend forward on this one.
So, like, I can say that we currently have contracts with Associated Engineering and KJS on different projects. So we are feeling that the reason, we understand we're definitely in a time constraint and stuff, but on this one, Eco-Engineering, we feel could actually reduce with their work plan, the regulatory and the monitoring costs going forward, we could reduce our operational costs going forward through this, that we feel that they're adding enough value, and that's why we went with them. They site visited, they proposed the proper work plan, they actually have a lot of Saskatchewan experience with landfills, and that's why we're confident in recommending them, Associated and KJS, they are great engineering firms as well, and we do have current projects with them. And this was a tough decision, but based on the actual proposals, Eco-Engineering is the most qualified to do it, and the best proposal.
All right. So in reference to the work plan, what is the timeframe we're actually looking at before they come back with the report that you want to start to work on?
I would have to double-check on that, but we have to have something, and so I want to say that this probably is by the end of the year. Yeah, so, and I would confirm that when we write the agreement, but I would say, based on the timelines of the ministry to be operating out of one by 2024, that the plan will have to come in in 2023. Yeah.
See, no more questions? As I said, I'll go along with your wisdom on this. I have no, as to the depth of what we have, what you're looking for for this, I'll leave it to you for your expertise on this. Call the question, all in favor? Go ahead. Passed unanimously. The Director of Finance, Ms. Al, please.
Good evening. So, the city of Weyburn's 2022 audit was recently completed by Grant Thornton. Grant Thornton has provided us a qualified opinion, as the city has employees with the benefit of accumulating non-investing sick leave as of December 31, 2022. Management has not recorded the estimate of accrued benefit, and therefore, the qualified opinion is being presented as it is a departure from Canadian public sector accounting standards. It's management's opinion that the accumulated sick leave is not an accurate representation of a liability to the city, so the sick leave is not payable, as it's not payable upon termination. So this is similar to the opinion that they've given the last couple of years. When the standards changed, we had to accumulate it, so we chose not to. So, a comparison between the 2022 budget and the actual, revenues were budgeted to be $22.6 million. Our actuals came in at $24.2, a difference of $1.57 million. I'll get into later what the main reason for this was. The expenses were budgeted to be $26.29 million, and the actuals were $26.6 million, so the difference of $357,000. Grants, we budgeted for $671,000, and our actuals only $24,000, and also discuss this later. So, with our financials, we have a budget $2.9 million loss, and our actuals came in at $2.3. So we actually had a difference of 500, just under $570,000 above our budgeted loss. So, our budget is based on cash basis, and our audited financials are accrual-based, so that's where the deficit budget comes in when you look at our financials. Note 2 on page 12 shows the calculation to a balanced budget on how we balance our budget to a zero, and it involves transfers and amortization and transfers for our capital purchases. So areas to highlight throughout the statements are, with our statement of financial position, the cash and cash equivalents, cash increased by $100,000, actually, it says $730 in that report, it should just be $100,000. Taxes receivable increased by $110,000. So these two items, there's not a lot of change. Other accounts receivables, they actually decreased by $960,000, and this is mainly due to, in the prior year, we were waiting on a federal grant to be received. Our investments, our short-term and long-term investments had very little movement in 2022. Our long-term debt, so that's our loan on the credit union Spark Center, our repayment schedule is in note 7, so we had one payment in that. And our deferred revenue, so this increased by $335,000. So this is due to the CCBF funding, that's classified as deferred, as we didn't have a project that was approved, and that has to do with, that's that grant that was $671,000. Some of it had been received, and we have now received the second half of that, because it wasn't received at year-end, we couldn't put it as deferred. So, once we have an approved project on that, then we'll be able to recognize it as revenue. But we have actually received that $671,000 in our accounts. So taxable capital assets, our fleet increased by just over a million. We had purchases that included a front-end loader, the pothole patch truck. We purchased five half-ten trucks, a maintenance truck, and a tool kit. So you can see on note 13 on page 17, the hospital levy trust was at the $6 million that we had agreed to fundraise or collect for, so we had the full committed amount at the end of the year. Our schedule of taxes and other unconditional revenues, so that's schedule 1 on page 19, overall, this was $145,000 below budget. So our taxes, we had abatements and adjustments that were lower than budgeted, so that resulted in a higher net municipal tax amount. The penalties received was less than budgeted. Our unconditional grants, so we had budgeted for our provincial equalization revenue sharing to be $75,000 more than what we actually received, and with our grant and lose, the Sask Energy grant received was $57,000 less than budgeted. Our schedule of operating and capital revenues, this is on schedule 2, pages 20 to 23. So, overall, we are above budget by a million on this. The general government, the investment income was actually $325,000 below budget, and this was just due to fluctuations in the market, because we have to record what the market is at, at the end of the year. So, we budget on a cash basis, and this was accrual basis. Our CCBF funding, this was the budget for $671,000 that we had only received, the $335, and that was in our, that's in our deferred revenue. So we, as I said before, we have received the other $335,000. Protective services, the revenue was consistent with prior years and with their budget. The transportation services, there was some extra funding that was received for asphalt and from the urban highway connector program. Environmental and public health services, the landfill fees were $370,000 above budget, and the multi-material stewardship Western program funding was above the budget, and this resulted in $425,000 in extra revenue. Planning and development, we had an unbudgeted revenue amount for the sale of the land for the hospital, so that resulted in higher than budget. Recreation and cultural services, this was above budget by $290,000, and this is mostly due to the Spark Center rentals and the leisure facility fees being above what was anticipated. They also received some extra grant money to cover some salaries. Utility services, these were $100,000 above what we had budgeted for, and this is just due to extra water usage. So with our expenses, this is on schedule 3, pages 24 to 26, so overall, we were $357,000 above budget. The general government services expenditures were comparable to, they're pretty comparable to the budget. There was really nothing to highlight in there. Protective services, the police protection was $138,000 above budget, and now the police chief will speak to this. The fire protection, their expenditures were under budget by $55,000, and that was primarily due to a vacant position. The transportation services, their expenditures were over budget by $42,000. So their maintenance materials and supplies were actually over budget by $373 due to increased fuel costs and increase in repairs, but then their professional and contract services and wages were under budget, so this kind of offset that difference. The environmental and public health services, this is under budget by $130,000, and this was due to maintenance materials and supplies were less than were projected. Planning and development, this was under budget by $120, and this was due to the delay in the budgeted contract expense for development. The recreation and cultural services, so their wages were above budget by $108,000. This is mostly due to an increase in demand in the facilities, which resulted in additional staff, along with overtime wages for extra maintenance needs and overtime. A portion of this over budget was extra money that came in from some grants, so that was covered by revenue, as well as, they did have extra money coming in due to the demands on the facility, so extra rental and fees that came in. So the utilities, so their power and energy costs were above budget by $125,000. This was just due to increase in building usage and increase in utility rates. Their maintenance materials and supplies were also above budget by $220,000, and of this, $90,000 was unbudgeted, but it was funded through the reserve for the Signal Hill Trail. Facilities did have quite a few unexpected repairs, two boilers, they had some pool issues, so that was their increases. So the utility services, that was under budget by $125,000, mostly due to professional services not completed, and therefore, a decrease in maintenance materials and supply costs. So our schedule of accumulated surplus, that's on schedule 8 of page 31. Our reserves decreased by $1.8 million, this is mostly due to internal loan advances for the utility projects and fleet purchases. So overall, we did have, we had an actual loss of $569,000 below the budgeted loss, so that was good to see. The surplus is primarily due to above budget revenue within recreation, culture, environmental services, and the utility services. So, once we receive the final audited statements with all the signatures and all the information updated, we will get those in the public accounts onto our website for the public to see. Questions?
First off, thank you to both Grant Thornton and yourself for all the work done on this. Is there any question? Let's just have a motion to approve, and then we can give discussion. Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I would move that the 2022 audited financial statements and 2022 public accounts for the city of Weyburn be accepted as presented.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Go ahead. Thanks, Your Worship. Laura, first off, congratulations to you and your team on another clean audit. That's exceptional to hear. I wanted to just touch on the way that we do our internal loans, and then also, if you could just, I won't ask for much commentary, just make sure that what I say is reasonably close to accurate. Page 31 of the statements is our surplus, or our reserves, as we like to call them. We did ask our auditor earlier if they were comfortable with the way we did our internal loans versus going out to market for those. They said that was a good way that we're doing that. I think that works out very well for the people of Weyburn, because we continue to fund ourselves that way. Do you foresee this, so right now, you know, roughly $22 million, do you foresee that staying reasonably stable over the next five or 10 years, or do you see big peaks and valleys? I know, I know that's super hard to say, I'm just asking you to look into a crystal ball.
Yeah, that, it is hard to say. I guess it all depends too on fees coming in. We do see our utilities needing more work as the years go on, and so, yeah, so fees have to cover those, and we do give some internal loans for that, but, yeah, as everything needs upgrading, we are seeing them go down.
I guess $22 million, although, when you look at it on a piece of paper, it looks like a lot of money, but it really isn't, as these projects, we just heard, you know, $160,000 for an engineering study, things like that, this goes, not a lot of money.
And a lot of this is, like, pinpointed towards specifics, so, like, say...
Fleet service is a good example, yeah.
Like, say, the cemetery, they have their own reserves, so that money has to go towards the cemetery. We don't give it to, we wouldn't give it to fleet services, you know, like, so something like that. So it is pinpointed for a specific use, so that's where you run into difficulties as well.
Thank you.
With this, one of the things to say is that, right now, we're moving into a budget year, and there's, you've got cities like Saskatoon that are looking at 18.5% increase to their taxation, simply because they haven't been able to, because of some of the projects that they're doing up there. I mean, most certainly are not in that position, but we are moving into a time when we could have unbelievable inflation coming up here, too. So, as we saw, the interest going up again, another 0.5. So it's, we're in unprecedented times, we're in changing times, and hopefully, this budget will be able to, moving into our next fall budget here, we'll be able to hold the course for another year and see where it goes. Is that what you're foreseeing on this?
Hope so.
Hope so, yes. But I mean, only time will tell, because it depends on what, how it goes and how each, you know, thing moves. Is there other questions on there? Because you had lightly touched about the over budget on the police's one there. Did you want to talk there, chief, on that? At all, or there? Sure, go ahead. I thought that's why you're here for...
Just in case there were any questions, that's all.
So, because, again, the surplus, it goes up and down, sitting on the police board, you know, some years, we were in budget, and other years, we're not. This year, there was extra, I know, it was over budget.
We were over budget, and my numbers are slightly off, I'll have to talk to Laura afterwards. I'm at $125 from the last one in June, the BCR, but I guess there was a change, except the $138.
So, yeah, that would be because it's cash-based, and this is accrual, so there'd be some extras included in there, like amortization would be included in this, whereas what you had probably didn't have your amortization.
Okay. So, you know, based on ours, I think with the police board, as well as the couple of changes that we made with respect to the overages we've had over the last couple of years, we've created a budget committee for the police board itself, so we meet prior to our police board meetings, and we've looked at the budget very seriously and recognize that one of the biggest contributors to being over this year was benefits, and we never really knew how much to take off with percentage-wise, and we ended up, we went from 18% up to 21%. Somewhere 18, somewhere 19, and we were still behind the eight ball a little bit, and as a result, we've included about a 21% take on for the benefits based on the wages, and year-to-date, we're somewhat right in the ballpark where we need to be. Last year as well, we all know that our building's getting a little older, and so we had to replace the boiler system for $42,000 that we never accounted for in the budget, and that's an overage as well. And again, in 2022, we had approximately $16,000 in overages for gas. So we've adjusted our budget this year, and I can tell you that we met today, the budget committee, and we're right on par with respect to where we need to be, roughly, give or take, depending on whether or not we've purchased a new vehicle, but we haven't received the revenue for that out of our capital account yet. So if we took that into consideration, we'd be sitting at about approximately $88,000 positive variance. To say that with a caveat, we did have some issues with our building and the AC, we know that we have to replace that, so there's an added cost this year with respect to the AC and replacing that and upkeep with that. But the good thing is, we found some revenue that we didn't think we would have through one of our members retiring, and there's some salary dollars that were there that we didn't account for having available to us for the rest of the year. So I think so far this year, myself and the councillor at Corrigan, along with one of the other board members, met, and we're pretty happy where we are year-to-date.
Question? Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, I guess, call the question for acceptance. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your Worship, I think we need a motion to approve the overage for the police, which, if I could make that...
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think it's on there, but I think we do.
Okay, right, go ahead.
So, as a member of the board and the police commission in city council, I'd like to make a motion that, that's for the Police Act, a motion to authorize by Weyburn City Council to fund Weyburn Police Service 2023 budget overage of 138, whatever Laura came up with, the new number, sorry. I have the 128. I should have wrote that down.
Well, the expenditures were $138,000.
Even?
No, that's wrong.
Yeah, so I have the budget over, yeah, through general operating and general reserves.
Your Worship, I will second councillor Van Betchy's motion.
Discussion? Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Approved. Thank you, your worship.
I, I had missed that one on my, I don't know if that was on my, my paper, so, not my, so. Moving forward to the next one was development, uh, cost charge review.
Thanks, your worship. As per the Plan Development Act, section one sixty-nine and one seventy-two, subsection three B, uh, city council may pass a bylaw establishing a charge of, uh, for off-site development levies or subdivision servicing fees for one or more purposes described in the act. The city of Weyburn engaged a consultant who completed a study back in December of two thousand and twelve regarding the capital costs of providing municipal services, infrastructure to develop a land within the city of Weyburn limits, as well as projects required to maintain or expand existing infrastructure based on future development. As a result, the city of Weyburn passed bylaw two thousand and fourteen, thirty-three twenty. In two thousand and eighteen, an internal review was conducted of the study completed by Stan Tech, and the projects listed in the report, uh, since the city of Weyburn had no, not experienced the anticipated growth, uh, as estimated in the study, city council decided to modify the projects listed within the report. Uh, through this review, bylaw two thousand and eighteen, thirty-three eighty-eight was approved. In two thousand and twenty-three, a city council identified a need for development cost charge review as a part of our strategic priorities. The city of Weyburn is requesting proposals from qualified consultants or consulting firms to conduct a development cost charge review that includes the following: preparing an updated development cost, um, cost background study to meet the requirements as per section one sixty-nine of the Plan Development Act of two thousand and seven; calculating and updating a development charge rate schedule based on the information contained in the development charge background study; and then also preparing a revised off-site development levy, uh, levy bylaw and its associated rate schedule. So within the two thousand and twenty-three budget, um, there's been an allocation of fifty thousand dollars for the development cost charge review. Uh, so on May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, development cost charge review repairs, um, request for proposal was posted on the city's new online, um, bidding portal, which is bid in tenders, uh, SASS tenders and the city's website. Proposals were received by city Weyburn as of January twenty-eighth, or, sorry, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at two P M. Uh, we only had one proposal that was received, uh, so this is listed, so the proposal received was from Watson Associates, um, out of Mississauga, Ontario, for thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, that did not include P S T or G S T. Uh, so the proposal that was submitted, um, was reviewed to ensure that they submitted all responses required and could meet the project completion date. Uh, the proposal was evaluated based on costs, so sixty percent understanding and, uh, the services provided, which is thirty percent, and the schedule, which is ten percent. Uh, so Watson and Associates has extensive experience in, with development cost charge studies, having worked with over two hundred clients across Canada, including, they're currently working with the city of Regina. Uh, they have an experienced consulting team, a clear understanding of the scope of services and requirements, and they had provided a fully defined work plan. We did request that they could meet the, our project deadline, which is, uh, project completion date of March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so I am recommending the city of Weyburn award development cost charge review contract to Watson and Associates of Mississauga, Ontario.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. That the proposal of Watson make a motion that the proposal of Watson and Associates Economic, Economists Limited from Mississauga, Ontario, to perform the development cost charge review for the city of Weyburn in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars be accepted.
Your worship, I can second that motion.
Discussion. Go ahead, Laura.
I would just have one comment, and I, um, I'm very excited about this. I think it's great, and I'm glad to see that there's a timeline put on it, and good work.
I also, again, it comes back to this idea that only one bid on this, but that was answered at SUMA, as we talked to different engineering groups, a couple of different engineering groups, and they said to prepare a bid for a lot of this stuff costs them a lot of money. So sometimes these engineering, they're reluctant to, to put in bids if they know that they're not even in the running, so they, so that's where we all, I say that to the citizens of Weyburn who are watching, that's why sometimes we won't get any bids, because it does cost them, you know, five, ten thousand dollars to do this, put this project together, and they just simply refuse to do it. So, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, a couple of comments, I don't think any questions, but I, I agree, uh, it costs a lot to put these together, and when I look at the, uh, the thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, if I remember correctly, that's about what we paid for the last one, so they're certainly not out of line, and considering inflation, uh, agreed. I normally don't like to just see one, but I think in this situation, they're, they're within, and if I, uh, am speaking out of turn, I apologize, but the city manager, you have seen some of their work, and you're quite confident in, in that they can do this.
Yeah, so I actually reached out to the city of Regina, who's currently working with them, they're happy with the work they're doing. I also reached out to the city of Brandon, uh, it's a past project that was listed on there. So I actually reached out to them as well, and they're happy with the work they provide, mostly based on the experience they have. Um, they're able to do loss of the, of the costing for us because of the extensive work they have been doing. A lot of the work they have done is in Ontario, but they've been branching out into B C, into Manitoba, into Saskatchewan, and do more work within that, so I was confident with the work they can provide back to the city.
Yeah, I, I think so, too, and I, and I've done a little bit of just online searching of them as well. Uh, they're, they're not an engineering firm, which is the sort of sometimes where we tend to lean for this stuff, uh, so I, I kind of like the idea of what they're doing as well. So I appreciate this, uh, would, I see that, that kind of estimated completion date, March thirty-first, when, when are they hoping to get started?
I think they start immediately, so they've asked for, uh, if, if possible, to have a first meeting in July or in August, based on approval from council.
Excellent. I think this is, to sort of reiterate what councillor Hags said, I think this is an important piece of work for a city, and it's important that we keep on top of it. Uh, we've tuned it up once since we put it in place, this is the second one, and I'm excited to see what comes out of it. So again, kudos on the good work.
Seeing no further comments, call a question, all in favor? Passed unanimously. Introduction of Bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty-three, uh, thirty-four sixty, emergency measures bylaw, where this is one that's coming back to us again from the last meeting. City manager, Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So I'll actually talk about A, um, A, which is the bylaw itself, and I'll talk about ten A, as well as, which is the municipal, uh, emergency plan. Uh, so this was last presented to council for first reading on, uh, June twenty-sixth at our council meeting. Uh, so a little background, in Saskatchewan, municipalities must establish emergency plans by the Emergency Planning Act of nineteen eighty-nine. The plan gives council responsibility for the direction and control of municipal emergency response in order to take action to implement the plan and to protect the property, health, safety, and welfare of the public. Uh, so legislation requires municipalities to establish a E M O plan, which is an emergency measures organization, appoint a local emergency measures coordinator, establish a local emergency planning committee, and prepare an emergency plan. Uh, so a little background, um, you know, the Weyburn City Council has identified this as actually a strategic priority again for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, this includes, um, the review of our emergency measures bylaw, which is bylaw ninety-three eighteen fifty-two, uh, and the city of Weyburn emergency plan, which was developed in nineteen ninety-five and last revised in two thousand and eleven. Uh, so city administration has worked closely with Saskatchewan Public Safety Agency to ensure the emergency measures bylaw and the emergency plan meets all legislative requirements. Uh, the emergency measures bylaw establishes, uh, the Weyburn Emergency Measures Organization and the planning committee, and the need for the appointment of the emergency measures coordinator. The bylaw also clearly defines the roles of council, the committee, and the coordinator. Uh, emergency plan provides a framework that defines the response and recovery, um, measures that will be taken to enhance the health and safety of residents of city Weyburn during an emergency. So strategic objectives of the emergency management plan is listed on priority, so one is to provide for safety and wellbeing for all responders, sorry, um, save lives and reduce suffering, uh, protect public health, uh, protect government, government infrastructure, uh, protect property, uh, protect the environment, maintain public confidence, reduce economic and social losses, and enable rapid and comprehensive recovery. Uh, so there's instant command system training, uh, so I C S training, uh, which is an important aspect of ensuring the emergency plans are implemented properly. So, uh, city administration has been working with S P S A to provide I C S one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, and four oh two to all employees and members of council as per the city of Weyburn's I C S training matrix. The city of Weyburn Emergency Measures Organization and Planning Committee will begin to exercise the plan annually, uh, starting with tabletop exercises. Um, so S P S A's Emergency Management Exercise Design Program is being implemented and will help facilitate tabletop exercises, functional exercises, and full-scale exercises on a three-year cycle. Uh, so I have a recommendation in front of council tonight, I recommend the city of Weyburn repeal, uh, bylaw ninety-three eighteen fifty-two and approve the following, so providing second and third reading for bylaw two thousand and twenty-three, thirty-four sixty, which is the emergency measures bylaw. Uh, appoint, uh, our safety coordinator, uh, which is Abby Cryville, um, as the city of Weyburn Emergency Measures Coordinator, and also to have approval of the municipal um, emergency plan as presented. And before I'm done, also, I said this last meeting, but big thanks to, to Abby Cryville for all the work she's done on, on this, um, plan, bylaw, all the work. Um, we also had maybe our members of our administrative team who put a lot of work into this, and also big thank you to, uh, the province of Saskatchewan, um, the work that we've been able to do to build this plan and to follow what they'd like to see and, and provide support, uh, and the training, and for us to actually start doing tabletop exercises is actually quite exciting for us, because I've been with the city for a number of years, we've never done this, and it's exciting for us to start doing that moving forward.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that the new city of Weyburn Municipal Emergency Plan be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, only again, a commentary, your worship, I, I would like to reiterate all of the thanks to everybody that worked on this. Um, a few of us went through the afternoon of I C S training, and it's an interesting, it's an interesting thing to sit through, that sort of global language that's spoken. Uh, I thought that was very good. I appreciate that these are, uh, very difficult to do, so that you'll be looking at some tabletop exercises in the future to keep skills sharp. It's very refreshing to see, uh, this kind of work being done in the city to prepare, heaven forbid, should something ever happen that we need it, so kudos to your team.
These tabletop exercises, both during police and military time, doing them, I've done lots of them, and you do the actual exercises, they never go, they, you're never, the, uh, emergency is never going to match what you've trained for, but at least it's better, it's like football, you've trained to a certain level, and hopefully you can get it right. We won't comment on the riders, but anyway, but there again, that we're going to get it better than the riders do it. So anyway, that's really important for our, for our table, you know, to have this stuff, and that we're ready to start doing it so we can be a well, well-prepared city, and that's what we want to offer to our citizens here, a well-prepared, uh, city in case of any type of emergency that may come about. So with that being said, any other comments? Nope. So with that being said, uh, call a question, all in favor? carried unanimously. So then that brings into, uh, oh, that's, that was the second reading, so third reading?
Well, I think you just approved the emergency plan. I need second, third reading of the bylaw itself.
So...
Thanks, your worship.
So do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move the bylaw twenty twenty-three, thirty-four sixty, the emergency measures bylaw for the city of Weyburn be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none, call a question, all in favor? Approved unanimously.
Your worship, I move that bylaw twenty twenty-three, thirty-four sixty, the emergency measures bylaw for the city of Weyburn be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call, call a question, all in favor? Approved unanimously. Now, okay, uh, municipal, uh, new business, municipal emergency plan.
You approve that, your worship?
I was gonna say, that was a type on the agenda that came up, so. The other one, uh, I guess Development Officer Fletcher, you're up on a home-based business at two nineteen Government Road South.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so we've received an application from Lawrence to operate a printing and customizing merchandise business out of the residence at two nineteen Government Road South. It's located in the R two zone, it will operate Monday to Friday, nine A M. to six P M. This would be considered a controversial use, as the business involves clients being directed to the home to look at samples and pick up orders. Um, the applicant anticipates a minimal traffic increase with three to five customers attending the home per week and parking on the driveway as available. Um, this requires a neighborhood notice process and council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed on June first to all neighbors within fifty meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. So home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions: be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. Um, so options tonight would be option number one, that council approves home-based business permit twenty twenty-three, uh, zero one zero at, uh, two nineteen Government Road South, subject to the following conditions: no person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer, no advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in a media, home-based business shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area, face of any home-based business sign on site must not exceed zero point zero nine two square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. This permit is only valid for the above address and is not transferable to another address, reapplication will be required if the business moves. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance, the applicant's driveway shall be used for off-street parking, city of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Uh, option number two would be refusal of the home-based business permit, and the reasons would have to be provided for refusal. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business permit application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw and therefore are recommending option number one to council.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the home-based permit twenty twenty-three dot zero one zero to allow for a home-based business at two nineteen Government Road South, that's lot one, block one fifty-eight, plant M four nine two six, be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Second. I'll second that, your worship. Discussion. Call a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. One more, uh, home-based business daycare on King Street.
Okay, thank you, your worship. An application has been received from Kelsey to operate a home daycare out of their residence at five twenty-three King Street North. It's located in the R two zone, and the business will operate Monday to Friday, seven thirty A M. to five P M. It would be considered a controversial use, as it involves clients being directed to the home. The applicant, uh, anticipates a minimal, uh, traffic increase with approximately three families attending the home for drop-off and pickup daily, and parking on the driveway as available. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on June twenty-six to all neighbors within fifty meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. One response was received, but it was later withdrawn. Um, home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened, and I won't read all the provisions again. Um, so the decision options tonight would be option number one, that council approves the home-based business permit twenty twenty-three dot zero one five at five twenty-three King Street North, subject to the following conditions: uh, no person other than a resident of the dwelling shall be engaged in the home-based business, no advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in a media, home-based business shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area, the face of any sign must not exceed zero point zero nine two square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback, permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address, reapplication will be required if the business moves locations, the number of children cared for in the residence at one time shall be limited to the regulations of the Childcare Act and approved licenses under said act for the business, provincial regulations and licensing requirements must be followed where applicable, home-based businesses are subject to review to ensure compliance. to ensure compliance. The applicant's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients, and a city of Weybourn home, or business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Option number two would be refusal of the home-based business permit, and the reasons for refusal would have to be provided tonight. Staff have reviewed the application and are recommending option number one to approve the application with conditions identified above.
Your worship, I would move that the home-based permit 2023.015 to allow for a home-based business at 523 King Street, Lot 30-32, Block 145, Plan Z5298, be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
I have a question this time, Janine. Thank you for your hard work on this. I just want to go back to the one response was received, later withdrawn. Was that withdrawn because we were able to satisfy that resident's concern?
Um, no. It was withdrawn because, I guess, one of the properties in the area is currently for sale, and the people who were looking at purchasing the property wanted to object to this business. My understanding is that is no longer the case, and so they just withdrew their application, yeah.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Again, it's good to see that we have more childcare coming in as we await also to, you know, color my world coming in and expanding. So it's always good to see childcare here. Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Land sale, Janine, one more, last one.
Uh huh. Thank you, worship. The city has received an offer to purchase from Jordan Chakri, who currently owns 921st Ave. Northwest for the lot to the east of his property. It's Lot 14, Block 3, Plan AZ357. The land measures approximately 7.62 meters by 50 meters for a total of 0.1 acres. Offer to purchase is for $15,297 plus GST, which is the market price charged for the city. It's made up of $12,000 per acre for bare land plus $375 per front meter for sewer, $375 per front meter for water, and $1,100 per front meter for pavement. The applicant has proposed lifting up their house and putting a new foundation in to expand the lifespan of their house. Upon some survey work being done, it was discovered that the garage belonging to the applicant and functioning as part of their property is currently located on city-owned property. The sale of the lot is requested to ensure the applicant owns the land that the garage and driveway are located on so they can ensure that they will not be jeopardized by being located on land that is not owned by them. Lot 14 is one of, one of lots for sale as part of a larger parcel on the city's website. However, the applicant is only looking to purchase one of the four lots. Council's approval is required as the sale would not be of the entire parcel as advertised on the city website. So I've included an image of the aerial imagery we have. It's not the most accurate in terms of where property lines are, but you can see that there is at least a portion of the garage and driveway that are located on that city-owned parcel. So the offer to purchase is for Lot 14. It's located to the east of the applicant's property at 921st Avenue Northwest with services and street frontage. The price was determined using the following calculations from the listing on the website, but broken down for just one of the four lots because we currently have them listed altogether. So as I mentioned, it's $12,000 per acre for bare land, $375 per front meter for sewer, $375 per front meter for water, and $1,100 per front meter for pavement. Property is currently zoned mixed use, which allows for a variety of residential and commercial uses, including existing residential uses. And the proposal is for the applicant to be able to maintain ownership of the existing garage and better comply with existing setback requirements for the house. The house has existed since the 1940s, and the garage has existed since approximately the 1950s or 60s. Sorry. The city has listed for sale on the website is four lots, each measuring with a frontage of approximately 7.62 meters, which is 25 feet, for a total of approximately 30.5 meters in a total area of approximately 0.4 acres. The lots are legally separate titles in ISC, so one could be sold without impacting the remaining lots. The remaining lot would be approximately 22.5 meters wide and 0.3 acres, which would still allow for some forms of development if the city sold it in the future. No formal offers or serious inquiries have been received on the parcel in the last several years that the staff are aware of. There is a portion of the property that is within the flood fringe, which would require that development be flood-proofed to half meter above the 1,500 flood elevation. The applicant is aware of that constraint. The sale will be contingent upon the following conditions. The lot must be parcel-tied or consolidated with the purchaser's existing property. All costs associated shall be borne by the purchaser. The land is sold as is where is, meaning any improvements, upgrades to roads, services, utilities, and any other infrastructure is at the cost of the purchaser. And the city's standard sale agreements, including deposits, closing, land registry costs, et cetera, would apply. So council's options tonight would be to approve the sale of Lot 14 to Jordan Chakri for the purchase price of offered of $15,297 plus applicable GST with the conditions listed above, and that the city clerk be authorized to sign said sale agreement. Or option number two would be to deny the sale of Lot 14 to Jordan Chakri and direct administration to advise the applicant of the denial, and the reasons for denial would be provided. So the staff recommendation would be that should city council approve the sale as indicated in option number one, it shall be subject to the conditions listed.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. I have a motion that the offer to purchase Lot 14, Block 3, Plan AZ357 from Jordan Chakri in the amount of $16,297 plus applicable GST be accepted with the following conditions. The lot must be parcel-tied or consolidated with the purchaser's existing property. All costs associated shall be borne by the purchaser. The land is sold as is where is, meaning any improvement, upgrades to roads, service utilities, and other infrastructure is to be at the cost of the purchaser. The city's standard sale agreement conditions, example, such as deposits, closing, land registry costs, et cetera.
Your worship, I will second councillor Van Betje's motion.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Two comments. One, Janine, I had a lot of questions after the first page of your memo and none after the second. So well done on being thorough on that. Just in general, I think it's worth noting that I don't like the idea of us selling lots directly, but this is not a normal circumstance. So take no issue with now. I just don't want us to get into the habit of selling directly to consumers and undercutting our developers who we're trying to attract to the city. But that's not the case here, so.
Okay, go ahead. I was, well, it's just that we sell other commercial lots, too. Going ahead, that we are going to call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. We have, there's, I guess, then questions on here? Any questions at all? Or comments?
I do have one, your worship. Thank you very much to the director of engineering. Can you just update us a little bit on the progress of line painting in the city?
Yeah, so line painting was supposed to start today. Unfortunately, they've been delayed in later into the week because they have occurred rain in the area they're working on right now. So they are a bit behind, but they are expected to start Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, depending how the weather holds in their other project. So they have seen some rain delays in some other areas, which has delayed them in coming to Weybourn. But they, we're next on the schedule.
This is number, this is number one? Number one of two?
It'll be one this year.
Oh, you're on your mark.
Yeah, what's the, how long does it take to do the job once they're here? No, no weather delays? Couple of weeks?
Um, yeah. And this year, we're doing a bit more curb painting. So we don't do the curb painting every year, but we are going to be doing some curb painting with some no parking and stuff, just to refresh that. So we have added a bit more of that in. So yeah, it'll be about two weeks, give or take.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the community, everybody who supported the Weybourn Agricultural Society's fair this year. I think it was a great success. It was always busy when I was there. And I want to thank all the volunteers that either called the egg society when they knew that they hadn't been called yet to come down and volunteer, or who stepped up whenever they needed to because we, they couldn't put on such a great fair without all of their volunteers. So thank you again.
Go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, I just want to echo what councillor Morris said. I hate to say the fair is the best thing going on in Weybourn, but it's certainly one of the biggest events that we have going on in Weybourn. It brings so many people into town between it and the radio, and it is a great event. And I want to thank the Agriculture Society, especially because I know they're very short of volunteers, and they work hard and put many, many hours in. And I encourage people to get out and volunteer next year and help out because it's a great event, and it'll only get better.
I wanted to, speaking of events, last week, we had a swim meet with loads of people. We had a ball tournament with a little league ball tournament brought in there. We've got continuing having events, and there's events all the way around. We have, Ben Goff is going to have their, their event. Mito's going to have their rodeo event. And even Trossax is having one on August 12th, if you want.